Ladies and gentlemen, everyone please stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce United States Army Veteran Stuart Bailey, longtime employee of Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs Office, graduate of Valley Forge Military Academy, served United States Army as Spec 3 during the Korean War conflict, and was stationed in Berlin, Germany. I'd like to also say that, Stu, would you like to step right over to the podium right there? I'd also like to say that Stu is a veteran's veteran, and he is there to make sure that all of our veterans are taking care of all of their needs, whether it's a ride to the VA, or medical, or financial, or whatever they may need. I'd like to thank you for your time. The floor is yours. Thank you for your service, Stu.
Please your hand over your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, please remain standing. We have to have a moment of silence for our first responders. Board of County Sheriff's Office, Florida, Deputy Sheriff Benjamin Nemitz was killed in a vehicle crash while responding to a domestic violence call. Hall County Sheriff's Office, Georgia, Deputy Sheriff Nicholas Dixon shot and killed following a vehicle pursuit of a stolen vehicle. Sergeant Michael Stevens, Stone County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, Arkansas, was shot and killed while responding to a domestic incident. Please keep our first responders and their families in their thoughts and prayers, and please keep all of our servicemen and women that are across our world keeping us safe and in our country, keep them safe, and to keep them also in our thoughts and prayers. Just a moment of silence. Thank you. Stu, thank you again for coming in. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, July 24, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriany?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Proclamation presentations, 19-0176, Good Works Presentation for Doug Long, Lackawanna County's Office Services. Is Doug here?
Just saw him, yeah.
Doug, would you like to, uh, would you like to come up to the podium and bring your scooter?
Yeah. I want to thank the commissioners very much for being recognized. I also want to thank Jeff Mandot and Mike Brown for allowing me to be here and doing a presentation of change. What occurred about a year ago, I was in New York City, and the carriers were using an electronic device, and it was just starting out in New York, and I was amazed by it. So I investigated it, I called different companies and different outlets, and we came up with the company from Swagatron, it's called the Swagger G5. And usually the cutting trend in California starts there in clothing, starts everywhere, and leads to Scranton. Well, for the first time, I like to announce it's starting in Scranton, and it's leading back to California. And how that happened is the Scranton Times did a story, and how it works to save time, and what I do with the scooter, only in the afternoon deliveries where they're light deliveries, a judge, somebody may need something certified, I take it serious, I handle very sensitive mail. Mail that has to be as quick as possible, most professionally handed, and most private. And what I do in the afternoons is a judge will call that would have to have something signed, a certified mail or piece of letter, then it has to be taken over the post office, and they need it sent by 3:00 or 4:00. Usually that would take hours, sometimes if we're shorthanded, we're being pulled in different directions, it could take a little while. For me now, what's being recognized and much quicker is our response turnaround time is within a half hour, in many occasions where the judge will text me, I'll hand off the delivery, go get it signed at work release or some area, and then we'll send it off to the post office, which could take maybe 15 minutes, which usually could take an afternoon or the next day possibly. So I do want to thank Jeff Mandot and Mike Brown. They're the IT department, they're on the cutting edge of things, and they see a lot of things with electronics on a daily basis to improve us. So how I arrived here, and I want to thank the commissioners, it's a great story, and it's such a positive story for Lackawanna County, is the Scranton Times did a story and a big picture of me on the scooter making a delivery, and they were amazed by this apparatus here electronically. And the AP wire got connected, and they picked it up in California. And the Swagatron Company took it pretty serious. We're the only county, and the only company, and the only person delivering mail through their company right now in the United States. It's happening here in the county. So Swagatron reached out to me with their executives and their PR department, and their company is worldwide right now. They're inventing the hover round, they're inventing anything to do with electronic devices that you see. I found out the company has a major technical place in South Bend, Indiana, California, and Denver. So this is a worldwide company that just was amazed at Lackawanna County recognizing the commissioners, and they asked if they could do a major story on it for their magazine and their blog page for their Swagatron company in the three locations, that they could be all in their locations of where they're making it, it would be right in their plant, it would be shared with everyone, and it'd be for the world to see. And I agreed to it, and the commissioners, I asked them, sent copies to Fran and the executives to make sure that this was before it was released to the public or worldwide, that it would be handled in the right way. So they cooperated with Fran and a couple other executives were following along of the proofs before the story was put out. So the story is out to the world, and we are the first one in cutting technology to deliver fast service at Lackawanna County, and we're being recognized throughout the world of being the first mail carrier service electronically for high envelopes and stuff on the Swagatron. And I'm honored and thank the commissioners, I really am. It's something new, it's cutting technology, and you don't know what's going on behind the scenes in the quick process. And of course, our department takes this very, very serious, and it's very highly confidential stuff, and it needs to be sent out as quick as possible, the quicker the better. So again, I want to thank the commissioners. I hope everybody understands the gist of, this is pretty cool for Lackawanna County, is it not? Usually the trend starts in California.
What I'd like to say is, first and foremost, Doug is working for the county, probably going on, I think, four years next year, and Doug brings, um, Doug brings a smile to a lot of people's faces that don't really smile in Lackawanna County, really. And you know that's a fact. And his personality is upbeat, and that brings a lot of people up, and that really matters in our county. And this is to say, before we even get near the scooter, at Christmas times, when he goes delivering, he wears a Santa Claus suit. You know what I mean? The people in our building love him, the people at the courthouse love him anywhere else he has to go. This is great, it's efficient, it's effective, it gets the mail where it needs to be, and the other thing is, this can get someone out of prison faster, because sometimes something gets signed, and it may take time to get out to the prison, Doug just zips right out to the jail and drops it off, and the people are released. So there's just so many efficiencies with it. And the other thing is, some of this is so, I mean, this is mail that has to be given to the judges, given to whoever immediately, and he makes sure that it's done there as fast as possible. And it's saving us time, it's saving us hours, and it's saving us money. So I'd like to thank you, Doug, for being innovative and getting Rick Jones to say A-OK.
And it's always safety first, because it is new technology, we're all thinking out of the box here. And of course, I take it very serious. Safety is first and in concern, and very on my priority to be very as professional as I could to the county of Lackawanna County being visible, and I appreciate that so much.
Great job. Commissioner Cummings?
That's the first I'm hearing about it, so congratulations, Doug, I didn't know anything about this, but, you know, you are a very positive person, and I appreciate the job that you do, I know that you're, everybody says that you do a great job, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Notariani?
It's always great to see you zip and bind your...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, you've had the scooter for a while, basically.
Yeah, about six months.
Six months.
He doesn't bring it in the building, does he?
Yeah, he has to, absolutely, he has to be charged. That has to be charged, right? It's a charge.
Bring it up to the sixth floor?
Yes. How it operates?
It's a charge, isn't it? You charge it up?
Yeah, charge it up, and it'll last, it'll go about 15 miles an hour, and a charge will hold me for a whole day's work, about 18 hours. You know, I mean, for two days, just about.
No, not in the building, it's outside, you get from place to place. Here's some pictures outside, I think this one's pretty cool. Here's going down the street. Now, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, we have photographers, they had come in, and they did a Sunday morning photo of the buildings.
And then, here is the front of the courthouse. There's a nice picture with the fountains in the background, very nice, Doug. And there's the big box of mail reaching in off the scooter, so...
I know, I look like a kid, I am 20 in that picture. Just a half is no, I'm not 50 some.
Doug, really, the scooter's one thing, but I want to thank you for, when you come to work every day, you have a smile on your face, you're here to make people happy, and you're getting your job done. It's, this is efficient and effective, and we're thankful for that, but we want to thank you for what you do every day. Thank you for being here, and thank you for giving your absolute eight hours every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for honoring me.
We have a certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Doug Long in honor of achieving a designation of an individual or group providing great works in Lackawanna County, given the 24th of July by Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Notarian, and Commissioner Cummings. Would you like to come forward? Do you want us to do the picture down there, so this isn't the way? Let's do it right down there, so you can have your scooter with you.
Take it for a ride, Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah. It's like a motorcycle, this. Take a couple, smile.
Don't worry, can we get one more? She's my professional photographer.
19-0177, Small Businesses, Commissioner Cummings.
We have Meat in the Middle, Delicatessen, is someone here for Meat in the Middle?
All right.
Nick Sen...
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Nick Senek. How's everyone doing today?
Good, how are you?
Living the dream.
Yeah, you and me both.
All right. So I was told to come and talk about my business a little bit, a little bit about me. Meat in the Middle is family-owned and operated, if you guys don't know, it's at 209 North Washington Ave, right across the street from the courthouse. We specialize in sandwiches that I just kind of came up with and found out about throughout my culinary adventure, and then other classics, like a traditional Italian hoagie is also looking, is also on our menu. But I started off as a dishwasher, as, you know, a lot of people do in the culinary field, and I didn't really enjoy it that much, especially the long hours and, you know, all the, you know, everyone looking at you and trying to be done. So I wanted to explore different options, so I started fry cooking, and then line cooking. Did just about everything, but I never owned my own restaurant, so I set that as a goal. And last year, last April, we opened up Meat in the Middle, and what a journey it's been. Scranton's treating me great. I appreciate all the hoops you guys make me jump through.
Not elsewhere than county.
That's right, we are completely different.
People gotta remember, yeah, this is separation.
Yeah.
We're here to help you, we have grant money, everything to help with the small businesses.
Right on.
That's a great story, I love your story. And that's exactly why, you know, I had asked for this to happen, for us to recognize small businesses, because of people like you who start off in a certain area and grow, and you go up the chain of command, basically, and then end up the owners. I know many people like that, and, you know, so proud of you and the work you've done. I see you around, something about Walt Disney, can you tell us what that was about?
Oh, yes ma'am. I went to school, I went to college at Johnson &amp; Wales for Culinary Arts, and I did my internship down in Disney World.
Nice.
We did the internship for three months, and then I got hired full-time right after as a cook 2, which is basically just doing saute or working the ovens. And then there's a cook 1 position, I went to a cook 1, and then before I left, I was at a position called chef assistant, which is one step down from the chef, and the chef runs the whole kitchen. I enjoy cooking, but I think it's just about work ethic. If you put the time in and you're passionate about it, then you can really do whatever you want, and I think I'm a pretty good testimonial to that, owning Meat in the Middle.
You're a great testimony to that, and I appreciate you coming in and telling us your story, because people look at you and they get inspired by the work to say, I could do that. And that's what we're looking for, is to inspire others, especially young people, and you are so, how old are you?
I'm 24 years old.
Wow. Congratulations, very nice, very nice. Good job.
Thank you.
It's very nice.
I can't take all the credit, and I wish my mom was here. If it wasn't for my mom, I really wouldn't know where I'd be today, and I'm sure she'll be watching this, and she'll have a smile on her face, but she really helped me open, and, you know, she set this meeting up, she's really great. She does a lot of behind-the-scenes work that a lot of people don't see, and I just want to take a quick minute and thank her.
Oh, that's so nice. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, hang on, Commissioner?
Commissioner Notariani?
I love your story, but I like your food better. I've eaten there quite a bit, and it's very, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing like mom. That's the best, there really is. You know, you're 24 years old, and who do you depend on the most? My mom passed away, but my mom I depended on for lots, everything, everything. Who was the person you could trust the most in this world, your mom? Who would help you the most in this world, your mom? Who would do what she had to do, make things go right for you, your mom? So congratulations on your business, and being 24 years old, just keep working hard. This is about, I mean, you're in the private sector, I mean, you get to determine your hours, determine what happens. I mean, I know it's not easy, but it's yours. You own it, you control it, you run it. And I'm just happy that, I couldn't believe you're 24 years old, I'm amazed, that's really, really great. I know you have great food, I was actually there for the ribbon cutting back in, geez, was that April or?
Yes, sir, April.
Yeah. And they had a lot of people at it, and we'll make sure that we let the word out there that where you're at and what you're about. What's your phone number, if anybody wants to call?
The phone number at the shop is 570-955-5064.
And what's the location?
209 North Washington Ave, Scranton, PA, 18503.
He's right across from the courthouse.
Nice.
The food's great, so please make sure you get out there. You miss this young man who's given his time, working in downtown Scranton, renting a spot, making his dream come true, so please, in the beauty of it, please stop in and buy a sandwich, have something to drink. Thank you for everything that you've done, and we're here for you if there's anything we can help you with in the future.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cummings?
So today, we have a certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Meat in the Middle, Delicatessen, in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 24th day of July 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notariani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Thanks for having me. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad.
Everybody up here? Smile, take a couple?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
That's a great, what a great story, thank you so much.
Starts with a dishwasher, congratulations.
That's right.
Special today's avocado milk.
Avocado milk.
And you, are you gonna be able to see this on ECTV? This is all, this is gonna be on ECTV probably tonight, right, Mark? Okay. Thanks.
He's one good kid.
Good one.
Great.
There is, there's a lot of great entrepreneurs in our area, you know, they start off young. Congratulations again.
Testaments are our families, you know?
Yeah, testament to mom.
Yeah, in our area.
In our area. Deteria Drug Deactivation Presentation by Director Barbara Durkin. Good morning, how are you today?
I'm fine, how are you all?
Good.
I'm here to present a brief presentation on a product that we are using through the Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs in Lackawanna County, and it is a way to, it's a preventative measure, but it's also a way to tackle the opioid epidemic that we've obviously seen ravage our area here. Thank you so much to the commissioners for the opportunity to present today. Thanks to Commissioner Cummings for your interest in the product and your interest in our office, we really do appreciate that. Just real quick here, we have obviously seen an opioid epidemic here within Lackawanna County and within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Within the last two weeks, there's been a number of articles in the Scranton Times talking about access to opioids, not only for people who are struggling with pain, but for people who are clearly looking for a way to deal with their own addiction. And we've seen that, obviously, we have an elderly population here within the county, and we've seen that the per-person dose for opioids within Lackawanna County is one of the highest in the Commonwealth. So we've known that, we've been really increasing our efforts to connect people to treatment if they need it, but we've also been partnering with many county agencies to increase efforts to collect unwanted or unused medications. So what we've done is, we've partnered with the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging to disperse, they're called the Detera Drug Deactivation System, and it's simply a pouch, and I have some with me if anyone is interested in taking one. We purchased them, I'd say, about six months ago. We have aging case managers who go out to the homes of the elderly, and go out to the senior centers, and to the hospitals, or wherever there's an elderly person that they're working with, and many of these individuals have unwanted medications that they're trying to dispose of. In the past, many people have flushed their medications down the toilet, or, you know, just thrown them away. We know that that's not the way to handle it, we know that the medications can get into the water streams. We also know that if you're putting them in the garbage, that people can, children or other individuals can take those medications if they know perhaps that you have them. So we thought it was really important to have something like this. It's a product that is manufactured out of Michigan. We've had them for about six months, and it's really simple. You really just take your unwanted medications, you open this, you put them in the pouch, you fill it up with water, there's pretty simple explanation on how to do it, and then they pretty much deactivate immediately, and then you throw them in the garbage, and it's like, they're totally gone. This packaging is biodegradable, so there's no harm to the environment, 100% DEA certified, so there's no issues with us using it in some of our preventative measures. We also are now, when we're going out to do some of our take-back events, that we're partnering, obviously, with the county commissioners and the district attorney's office, we are taking these with us as a, you know, giveaway, if many, some of the individuals there who are bringing their medications in to be disposed of, want to take these with them. We just actually placed a fairly large order for some additional pouches, because they're fairly popular at this point. We're looking to expand some of our collaborative efforts to include the Office of Youth and Family Services, because we know that the case managers there are going out into the homes, and many of those individuals have unwanted medications as well. So we think it's a really good opportunity to continue the partnerships with many of the agencies within the county, and we're always looking for ways that we can partner, not only with county agencies, but with folks in the community. We've done, within 2019, we've done a number of take-back events within the local communities. We've done them in Taylor, we've done them in Clark Summit, North Pocono, Blakely Police Department. The issue with the take-back events when we're doing them at police departments is they're costly. You obviously have to cover the cost of a law enforcement officer who's there, so we think that this is probably a more cost-effective way to dispose of medications, so we're looking to partner with law enforcement and many others within the county to get the word out there that we have them available. We have been lucky that we've received an influx of grant funds that have come down from the federal government to the state to tackle the opioid epidemic within the county, so we have funds to purchase these products and can get them out there to anyone who's potentially interested. The product that we are utilizing within our collaborative relationships, you can dispose of 90 pills at one time, so literally you can put 90, up to 90 in this, fill it with water, and then simply throw it in the garbage once you seal it. There are other variations, there are some that hold up to 45 pills, and there are some that hold up to 15 pills, and the cost varies, but like I said, we have the funds available to provide these if necessary. So I do have some, if anyone is interested, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks. Well, thanks Barb for coming in. You know, I saw this bag at the event for Sammy Hinahan, one of the tables that you had sponsored had the bags, and it was the first I've seen them, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, we brought them in to let the public know about them, and poor Barb was on vacation, because I called her immediately on a Sunday afternoon, so I apologize again for that. But she answered her phone. And she set this up with our office, so it's something that I think, Area Agency on Aging is a perfect place to send this out, because we have many, many elderly patients that are taking opioids and fentanyl patches, and, you know, if something happens to them, they should be disposed of immediately, and this does also deactivate the fentanyl patch as well, so, you know, that's something we really have to watch. That is, you know, some people are selling these patches to young kids, and, you know, anybody that is addicted to opioids, so, you know, once they get their hands on that, it's, you know, it's done, it's over. So anyway, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, and this is such an innovative way, and I'm proud to see some of the products that are coming out to try and assist people. I know myself, I've been, you know, trying to get, take the time out of my day to get up to one of these areas where we can drop them off, and it has to be a secured location, so I'm, you know, you have to call and see if they actually have a drop box there, and I just haven't made it. So I took this home and I used it, it's great, it's a great, great idea, you know, I had antibiotics that I had for years and I wanted to get rid of, so thank you, and thanks for coming in and doing all this work, especially when you're on vacation, I appreciate it.
No problem, not a problem at all. And I do have, and I'll put them up here, I do have a one-page kind of information sheet on the product, I do have some of the products available, so if anyone wants some, just let me know, but I'll put this right up here.
Can they pick them up at our offices here in the county? Okay, good.
We have, my office is located on the fourth floor of this building, this elevator, so you can, you know, go right down. I, like I said, I do have a bag of them available right now. They went quickly, we got rid of a lot of them quickly, because they were really very, very, very popular. You know, the elderly especially, they're not going to go to a drop box. Many of them are not able to get out of their houses as frequently as they'd like to, so having these available to assist them with disposing of their medications is great. So I do have some here, we are ordering some more, so if any of you are interested, feel free to stop down to the fourth floor Drug and Alcohol Department. If we don't have any left, my telephone number is 570-963-6820, so if you are looking for, you know, a larger quantity of some, we'd be happy to accommodate at any point. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Barb, we'd like to thank you for coming in. This does matter, and Commissioner Cummings is right on the mark for our senior citizens that might not be able to get out to these drop boxes, or for anybody, actually, it's easier for anybody, actually. easier for anybody, actually. But for our senior citizens to be able to put it in the pouch, put the water in, and then put it into the garbage, you know what I mean? It really matters. I mean, like, anything could get into your garbage, animals, kids, you don't know what's gonna happen with it. And just to keep everybody safe, and to keep that overabundance of drugs being in someone's house. Because, I mean, we know that the problem is, is a lot of these opioids are being taken from like their grandparents, the kids are going in and taking them away. Now that they're finished with that script, they can take it, they can destroy it, and it goes in the garbage and it's gone. It's biodegradable and it, and it works all around.
Absolutely.
So, but, but great job.
Well, another thing is now people are afraid to take them, so they just end up filling the prescription just in case they need one, and they, they don't take them. And they're sitting there at their house, and, you know, I mean, golly, you don't know who's gonna get them, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Terry, any?
Thanks Barb, great job.
Great job, Barb, thanks for coming in.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Ordinance second reading, nineteen dash zero one six five.
Thank you Commissioners, this is the second reading of this ordinance. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county operating under the Home Rule Charter and Optional Plans for Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas the Uniform Parcel Identifier Public Law Number One adopted January fifteenth, nineteen eighty-eight as amended twenty-one P S three-three-one E T U P I L authorizes counties to adopt a Uniform Parcel Identifier System upon the written recommendation of the County Recorder of Deeds. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County did adopt a Uniform Parcel Identifier System by Ordinance Number One Twenty-five on December nineteenth, two thousand, and amended the same ordinance Number Two Oh Nine on August twenty-fourth, twenty-eleven. And whereas, Recorder of Deeds of Lackawanna County has recommended in writing that the county amend the Uniform Parcel Identifier System Ordinance to allow for the Tax Assessment Office to refuse to certify a land record where the grantor-mortgger are not accurate. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained that Number One, Lackawanna County does hereby adopt pursuant to the U P I L a Uniform Parcel Identifier System in Lackawanna County. Number Two, the Lackawanna County Tax Assessment Office shall be the permanent depository of all county maps and shall provide for the recording of said maps in accordance with Section Five of the U P I L. Number Three, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall assign to each parcel of real estate to be recorded in the document a Uniform Parcel Identifier Number P I N. Number Four, after the effective date of this ordinance, all deeds, mortgages, satisfactions, releases, assignments, and other documents recorded in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds Office shall contain a Uniform Parcel Number for each parcel of real estate described therein and a certificate from the Lackawanna County Assessment Office that the Uniform Parcel Identifier Number or Numbers set forth therein are correct. Number Five, documents will be deemed unacceptable for recording without the proper certification stamp and seal of the Lackawanna County Assessment Office. Number Six, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall have the authority to refuse to certify any documents submitted for certification where the Uniform Parcel Number and the identified grantor-mortgger in the document does not match the county assessment records or Recorder of Deeds records after being researched. Number Seven, the Lackawanna County Assessment Office shall be authorized to charge a fee for each PIN certification shall be ten dollars, which shall be collected by the Recorder of Deeds at the time of recording. If a document contains multiple parcels, the cost for each parcel PIN certification shall be ten dollars per parcel PIN certified. Lost my space there. Number Eight.
That was my fault, sorry.
All ordinances and parts of ordinances inconsistent herein are hereby rescinded. Number Nine, if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall be affected by any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance which shall remain in full force and effect. Number Ten, this ordinance shall take effect ten days after enactment. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen.
Does the board have any questions before I make a motion?
And Commissioners, this is, as the Recorder of Deeds, Debbie McNulty had indicated at last, at the last meeting when she was here, the, this is to put some teeth into our Uniform Parcel Identification Law. Right now, every deed, mortgage, or other instrument recorded in the Recorder of Deeds Office is required to be PIN certified, which basically certifies that the PIN number matches the property being conveyed. However, there is no provision in the current ordinance that allows them to decline. So, let's say I bring in a mortgage on Commissioner Cummings' property.
Thanks for using me, Tom. You can have it, by the way.
Right now, right now, there's nothing in the record, in this legislation that would let them say, no, we can't certify this. But with this new ordinance, this will allow them to say, no, you, you're not, Lorene Cummings owns this property according to our record, you're not Lorene Cummings, boom, you can't, you can't record this. And it's, it's to prevent fraud, and, you know, prevent people from trying to file false deeds and mortgages on people's property in the county, so. This is the second reading, of course, so it needs to be enacted today, we already have the first reading.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to Ordinance Number Two Fifty-nine Uniform Parcel Identifier. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance first reading nineteen dash zero one six six.
This is Ordinance Number Two Sixty, Commissioner, an ordinance of the County of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, providing for the acquisition of certain property and temporary construction easement for the enhancement of public safety through the maintenance and improvement of Main Street in Dixon City Borough, all located within Dixon City Borough, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. Section one point three dash three zero two of Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter. The Charter authorizes the county Commissioners to acquire property by eminent domain three three five P A code one point three dash three zero two. Lackawanna County is engaged in the widening and resurfacing of pavement, reconstruction of sidewalks, upgrading of ramps in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the installation of new traffic signal equipment at the intersections of Main Street with Boulevard Avenue, Eagle Lane, and Dundaff Street in Dixon City Borough. Public use and necessity require that the property and the property rights here within identified be condemned, appropriated, and taken for the public use by the County of Lackawanna for such purposes as it may now or hereafter declare in the public interest. Public convenience, use, and necessity demand that portions of the real estate described in Appendix A heretofore in Dixon City Borough, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, B and the same are hereby condemned for the enhancement of public safety and improvement of Main Street in Dixon City Borough. In condemnation of the described property for the enhancement of public safety and improvement of Main Street in Dixon City Borough, and for general municipal purposes, the County of Lackawanna shall acquire a fee interest in portions of parcels or temporary construction easement upon portions of the parcels described in Appendix A. The county solicitor and any special assistant county attorneys be and they be, and are hereby authorized and directed to begin and prosecute the actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law to condemn, take, damage, and appropriate the lands and other property rights necessary to carry out the provisions of this particular ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect ten days following enactment. John Brazil is here to speak on this particular ordinance.
Commissioners, we discussed this at the work session, this is a street widening program that exists.
He's not on the microphone.
The mic, spin the mic over.
This involves seven properties, five of the properties are just for temporary construction easements. That means while they're doing construction, the equipment can go on the property, but once it's over with, it reverts back to the property owner, and we have to restore it. There's two properties for permanent easements, they're really small. One's against an individual, and it's approximately a hundred and sixty square foot, which is a small parcel, the other's a business, which is about five hundred. There were other property owners involved, but they've agreed to either give easements for such, or they've agreed to receive compensation. These remaining five just not, have not gotten back to the county, and the engineer needed to get the project moving, so he wanted to file these condemnations. He anticipates there'll be resolutions of them, but we need to move forward with condemnations. This is the first reading. At the next meeting, it'll be for your consideration to adopt.
So, if they, if they resolve it prior to the next reading, we don't have to read this, or we do?
Well, if, if all of them resolve, you don't have to adopt it, you won't need an authorization to condemn their property. But even if one doesn't agree, you would then have to adopt it for that one property.
And they're all aware of the fact that we, I mean, how, how do we know that they know? Do we just send certified?
My understanding is they would send them correspondence, they would send them correspondence indicating what they're doing up there, and they need easements, either permanent or temporary, and can you contact the county and, you know, try to work out an arrangement? They've indicated to me that these seven have not really gotten back to the county, so they, they need to move forward with this. And, and I would suggest, at least relative to the temporary easements, it would be just a matter of getting them to start talking to the county. The other two, there may be some compensation, but I don't know yet.
I just hate eminent domain, so I just wanna see exactly what, what's happening with it. And I understand some of them are a hundred feet, some of them are five hundred feet, but, um, once they're done working on it, does that end again? Like, do we keep that property then, or does that go back to the people?
Two of them are permanent easements, that means they will become the county's property. Specifically, with the street widening, I'm assuming portions of the road will now encompass part of the property. The, so they will be permanently county property. Those are permanent easements, and they'll just be easements to use it. The other ones are just temporary construction easements, the other five. So, once construction's completed, the easement is extinguished, and we're obligated to restore the property to its prior to the condemnation condition. And I would indicate in terms of the, the property, it is small, but I, I know Gary Cavill has a pretty decent map, if you wanna sit down with him before the next meeting and point out exactly, he'll, he'll show you exactly where it is.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to read on the maps.
Yeah, I saw them, I, I just.
Right, he, he has a bigger map, which would make it much easier to read.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda, you wanna set that meeting up?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, no action will be taken till the August meeting. Resolutions nineteen dash zero one seven four.
Thank you Commissioner, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers two eight five eight three eight through two eight six six zero seven, inclusive totaling two million one hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling five million two hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Controller DeBilio?
Yes Commissioners, all invoices on today's agenda are in order and have been audited and approved by our Controller's Office, and there are no invoices of the nature that we've been discussing lately.
Well, I, I actually see a UNC check for twelve thousand, another check. I mean, first it was fifteen thousand, two meetings ago, and we're still holding on that, onto that, and then it was nine thousand, the previous one, and now another twelve thousand. Like, what, what are these checks for? Why, we still have not had a meeting on this, and I don't know why we're giving these thousands of dollars to United Neighborhood Centers, I don't not understand that.
Is Brenda here?
She's not.
I think Brenda in Economic Development would be able to answer those more specifically, as far as our offices.
I've been trying to get a meeting.
We've been able to audit them accordingly.
I've been trying to get a meeting with the Director since January, so I'm not sure how much that's gonna work, but.
Commissioner, I'll facilitate a meeting for this specific purpose.
Well, we were supposed to conduct that meeting three meetings ago, so it never happened. And there's still checks.
Make sure it happens.
Yep.
Make sure it happens.
So, this, and, and I've had to write on the statute that came to my desk, I had to write it on there to hold another check from UNC again. And now there's, here's another one. And I, I mean, I don't know how many more things that are in here that, you know, but I'm, I'm not gonna stop looking at these payables, you guys are gonna have to start giving me some answers on this stuff, because I'm, I, this has been two and a half years of investigation that I'm not getting any answers on, and I'd like to know the answers soon. Thank you.
Set up that meeting, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second, or, I'm sorry, I, I would like to make sure that that is not again included.
Second, and that's not included, and that will be discussed at the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Cherry on?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, nineteen dash zero one seven eight.
Thank you Commissioner, this is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County supporting passage of H R one three two seven, Never Forget the Heroes, James Zadrogah, Ray Pfeiffer, and Luis Alvarez, Permanent Authorization of the September Eleven Victim Compensation Fund Act. Whereas, the Congress of the United States passed the James Zadrogah Nine-Eleven Health and Compensation Act of twenty-ten, which was signed into law by the President on January second, twenty-eleven, to provide health monitoring and financial aid to the first responders, volunteers, and survivors of the September eleven terrorist attacks. And whereas, the law funds and establishes a health program to provide medical treatment for responders and survivors who experienced or may experience health complications related to the nine-one-one terrorist attacks. And whereas, the Congress of the United States reauthorized the act in twenty-fifteen, extending coverage for a period of seventy-five years. And whereas, in February twenty-nineteenth, the special master administering the fund determined that there is insufficient funding to pay all pending and projected claims. And whereas, the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate have overwhelmingly passed H R one three two seven, known as the Never Forget the Heroes Act, which will permanently fund the September eleven Victim Compensation Fund. And whereas, some of the victims and the families of the victims of nine-eleven terrorist attacks reside in Lackawanna County and will be greatly affected by the nine-eleven Victim Compensation Fund. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners supports the passage of the Never Forget the Heroes Act by Congress to permanently fund the nine-eleven Victim Compensation Fund. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve as follows. Number One, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby support the passage of H R one three two seven, the Never Forget the Heroes Act, to provide a permanent source of funding to provide health monitoring, medical treatment, and financial aid to the first responders, volunteers, and survivors of the September eleven terrorist attacks. Number Two, further, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby petition the President of the United States to authorize the Never Forget the Heroes Act currently pending before the United States Senate. It is further directed that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to our U S Senators and Congressmen by the Chief of Staff.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to think that this board is very proactive, and we actually had a press conference this past week. Anyone who comes to our meeting understands that we really believe in our first responders. You know, since September eleven, two thousand and one, our first responders have become our first line of defense against terrorism. And, um, when I found out that this medical coverage might not be there, scared me really bad. And, you know, we started hearing about it more like May and June, but it got pushed through Congress, pushed it through, and Senate actually passed it yesterday, now the, the President will be signing it next. We had this already in motion, but I still wanted to bring it up and vote it, because this really matters. Does anybody remember, think about this? September eleven, two thousand and one, everybody's running out of the World Trade Centers, everybody's running out of the Pentagon, and people are running into Shakeville to try to see if there's anybody alive after the plane crashed. Now, as people are running out, all the first responders were running in, they're running in, they're running this building. They don't know if they're ever gonna see their families again, and just about all of them didn't see their families again. Firemen, E M Ts, policemen, just regular citizens that were helping out, employees of the, of the Pentagon and of the World Trade Centers. And when those towers collapsed, a new set of heroes headed out. They were the heroes that were coming to rescue the heroes. Does anybody remember that noise? That me, me, me noise that you heard right after the, the towers collapsed? Well, that was all of the firemen. That was their activation sound, that's on their, their lapel of their jackets, their fire jackets, signaling that they're down. If anybody remembers that, that creepy noise, that's what it was, that a fellow responder was down. And thousands of other responders and other citizens came out there, police, firemen, to try to help recover tradespeople, to cut through the steel and iron. And no one really knew what was in the cloud. No one, no one knew about the asbestos, or the pulverized cement, or the rock, the jet fuel that was there. And they're there, and they're trying to find citizens and first responders and bring them home to their families, and they were. And they were out there for weeks, and then it returned into recovery, and it was out there for about a year and a half, I think, before the final cleanup was done, or at least a year. Well, those heroes that were there are dying off. And the citizens of the United States owe a debt of gratitude to all of those, all of those first responders that were there, and that were also at the Pentagon, and that were also at Shakesville. I would like to recognize and bring up, I didn't realize this when we were looking at this, I reached out to Carl Graziano, I said, "Carl, I'd like for you to come in and say a few words about being here and endorsing the first responders' healthcare coverage, basically, to make sure their health is taken care of." And he said, "Do you realize that we have a police officer that passed away this past January, who was out there for, like, three or four weeks, helping in the recovery?" I said, "No." And then I remembered, because I had gone to the funeral, I said, "Was that Dan Schoffler?" He goes, "Yeah, second or third bout with cancer, and Scranton Police Officer, and one of our heroes that should be thanked every day for what they do in the streets to make sure we're safe." And at this time, I'd like to introduce his wife Sheila Schoffler to come up and say a few words. And I think we also have Tim Rollins, who's an EMT, and who else is here? Jimmy Sable here? Do I have anybody else, any of your first responders? Okay, well, Sheila, would you please come up and tell me if you'd like to come up and say a few words?
Good morning.
Sheila, thank you for being here.
And thank you for inviting me. Good morning. My name is Sheila Schoffler, and I was asked to come and speak with you today, because my husband, Daniel Schoffler, was the first responder at 9/11. At the time, he worked for Rural Metro Medical Services. He was their operations manager and coordinator for their disaster response team. Dan was in charge of the contingency of EMS personnel from northeast Pennsylvania, who were activated by FEMA a few hours after the 9/11 attacks on the World Trade Center. Dan was directly involved with gathering up personnel, directing them to get home and pack a suitcase. They were leaving for New York City the next day. In all the years that I knew Dan, the ins and outs of that terrible time were never really discussed. In 2003, he became a Scranton Police Officer. In 2007, Dan was diagnosed with stage IV mantle cell lymphoma. His oncologist in Philadelphia said it was an old man's disease. He was 39 years old. It was an incidental finding, as he had fallen chasing a criminal and suffered a chip fracture in his shoulder. We were very grateful to that criminal. The next year was spent at University of Pennsylvania every 14 days for inpatient chemo. It was effective and kept him in remission for 10 years. In 2017, Dan was once again diagnosed with lymphoma. What started out as a small lymph node in his neck mutated several times. Initially, we were told it's follicular lymphoma and very treatable, but within weeks, the mass on his neck grew tremendously, and the new biopsy showed diffuse large B-cell lymphoma. Radiation treatments reduced the mass. A few weeks later, the mass grew into his throat and threatened to shut off his airway. Ultimately, he had a stem cell transplant in May of 2018. But in June, the cancer had spread into his spinal cord and his brain. In August, his left face became paralyzed because of the lesions in his brain, and then his right eye started to close. He went through targeted radiation, which was effective, and his eyes opened on my birthday. He got some of his life back. He was able to drive again. I will never forget that day. The next few months were the worst, as he battled bacterial infections. We spent three weeks out of every month at Penn. I fought hard to keep him not only alive, but independent. Trying to preserve his dignity, I would take him to Toby Hannah State Park with his walker, so he could gain his strength. I didn't want his fellow police officers to witness how ill he had become, and I didn't want him to feel the embarrassment of his limitations. We had opened a claim with the World Trade Center five years prior, but I never followed through on it at the time. I felt that God had blessed us, as we had such great life, and there were so many people that were so sick from 9/11, and they needed the money more. But ultimately, we had to follow through when Dan got sick again. In a phone interview in December of 2018, which was part of the screening process, I watched as Dan relived Ground Zero. He crumbled, and so did I, talking about the body parts they collected, as there were no living survivors, no heartbeats, only body parts. Dan was the type of guy who never hesitated to help anyone. He had a huge bag of medical supplies in his truck, because he was still a paramedic and had medical command. He was first at the scene of a woman whose car had run over both of her legs at a gas station on Meadow Avenue. He rendered treatment to a little boy who sliced his hand open when we were on vacation up in Connecticut. His poor dad almost passed out. He immobilized the fractured hip of a woman who had fallen crossing a street in rural New Hampshire, and we waited with her for the ambulance for an hour. I know when he was on patrol on midnight, he would rush to the scene of medical calls, especially if it was an infant or a young child. He saved so many, many lives. So I was never surprised to know that Dan's name was the first on that roster to go to New York City. It's who he was, it's what he did. My Dan, my best friend, my courageous hero, lost his life to cancer on January 21 of this year. 9/11. I asked him if he would do it again, after all he was going through, and of course, he said yes. Rest in peace, Fly High Dan. Thank you.
Sheila, thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, that's hard to listen to.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's just, it was real difficult. You know, 9/11 was horrible for everyone, for America, obviously. And I talked about this at the event. You know, a lot of medical personnel, like myself, called to volunteer for their search and rescue, and to offer assistance in medical tents or hospitals, whatever they needed. And, you know, that call was heart-wrenching, because what I was told on the phone was that I would not be needed, because there was no one. It turned into a recovery. So that was the first time my eyes were opened as to how severe it was out there. And our country took a huge blow that day. It's heart-wrenching to hear some of the stories of the illnesses that have occurred afterwards from all the debris. And, you know, there's no one in our country that wouldn't support our first responders. And anybody that wouldn't, or that would suggest anything negative on their behalf, should be ashamed and embarrassed of themselves, especially after hearing some testimony like that. So, you know, I know that I myself support this bill. I know that everybody that is out in Washington does, and I know that our President, you know, loves our first responders and police force more than I think any President ever has, so that's not going to be an issue for him to sign it. And I thank Commissioner O'Malley for bringing this to our attention, so that we can give honor to a fellow first responder and his wife. Thank you for coming in, and I have no idea how you got through that without breaking down, so thank you for coming in. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Terriani?
Thank you for coming in and sharing that story. Your husband was a true hero, a very brave man. Thank you very much.
Sheila, thank you for coming in today. It means the world to us. And like I said, you know, after September 11, 2001, more emphasis has been put on our police and fire and EMTs than ever. And they are, they're our first line of defense against terrorism. And like I said, they were the heroes that were coming to try to save the heroes that were underneath the rubble that day. And now they're sick. So we got to make sure that we support them, and the President will be the last, he'll be signing this into law. So at this time, I would like to, I'd like to make a motion supporting the passage of the Permanent Authorization of the September 11 Victims Compensation Fund Act, 1327, Never Forget the Heroes Act. Can I have a second?
A second.
Roll call. I mean, yeah, roll call.
Commissioner Terriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you to all our first responders that are in our viewing audience, and thank you to anyone that's here that's a first responder. You mean the world to us. You make our life safe, and you do a job that most people don't want to do, but you love it, and that's the reason why you do it. And Sheila, thank you so much, and we are so sorry and deeply, deep sorrow for the loss of your husband, your best friend, and a hero of our community. Thank you. Nineteen dash zero one six seven.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving a plan of finance by the Geisinger Authority. Approving a plan of finance by the Geisinger Authority, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Lackawanna County, for the Geisinger Authority to undertake a project involving the issuance of health system renew review bonds and Series 2019, and authorizing other projects involving Geisinger Health and its affiliates, serving the people of Lackawanna County. Whereas, the Geisinger Authority, the authority, was duly incorporated under the provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipality Authorities Act, enacted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Montour on November 20, 1975. And whereas, the ordinance provides that the authority shall be organized for the purpose of acquiring, holding, constructing, improving, maintaining, and operating, owning, leasing, either in the capacity or lesser of leases, hospitals, health centers, and similar facilities as provided in the act. And whereas, the authority, in the future, intends to acquire, hold, construct, improve, maintain, operate, own, and lease, either in the capacity of lesser or leasing hospitals, health centers, nonprofit corporations, serving the public and similar facilities as provided in the act, the owners or operators, or which are Geisinger Health or one of its affiliates listed below. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of the County is the applicable elected representative of the governmental unit, having jurisdiction over the systems facilities located in Lackawanna County. And whereas, pursuant to the act, Geisinger Health and the authority have requested the Board of County Commissioners of the County to declare by this resolution that the project, it is desirable for the health and safety and welfare of the people in the county served by the project. Now therefore, the issuance of the bonds for the project described in the attached notice are approved. Number two, the Board of County Commissioners of the County hereby determines that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the county to have the authority issue the bonds, including future refundings or refinancings thereof, and to have future projects undertaken by the authority to finance and refinance the system facilities within the county that serve people in the county. Number three, the foregoing action of this board shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the Lackawanna County or any municipality therein, nor shall Lackawanna County or any municipality therein be liable for the payment of the principal or premium, if any, or interest of the bonds or any other cost related thereto. And here to speak on this resolution is the Geisinger Treasury Analyst, Andy Wargo.
Good morning, Andy.
Yes, I am Andy Wargo of the Geisinger Treasury Operations Department, and I'd like to thank the Commissioners and the county for welcoming us to here again this morning. The Series 2019 bond issue will be up to $1 billion, which will definitely include some refinancing, some new money. And as I said, it's up to $1 billion. I don't believe we'll get that far with that. The Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 requires us to have the resolutions passed by all governing bodies of anywhere that we have plans of spending any of the proceeds of these series. So, right now, we don't know what the structure's going to be. Maturities can be up to 30 years. I'd just like to say, currently, we have over 2,500 Lackawanna County residents that work for Geisinger, and there are almost 2,900 Geisinger employees that work within Lackawanna County. During the fiscal year of 2018, there were almost 11,100 inpatient cases involving Lackawanna County residents. That means they were at a Geisinger hospital facility as an inpatient. And in all, over 113,000 unique Lackawanna County residents were seen by Geisinger in some aspect. So that'd be, nobody's counted twice, and that 113,000. Our hospital here in Lackawanna County, Geisinger Community Medical Center, according to the Hospital and Health Systems Association of Pennsylvania, during fiscal year 2017, had a spending of $265.6 million, and that has a ripple effect of over $463 million. So, we're basically here to ask the Commissioners to pass the resolution, and if anybody has any questions, either the Commissioners or the public, we have experts with me that can answer them probably.
We'd like to thank you for the partnerships and the great opportunities that's come from Geisinger in Lackawanna County, from the medical school to the employment, to the health. Like I said, I spent some time at the CMC this past June, May and June, and I'll tell you what, superb.
Thank you.
Superb employees, doctors, nurses, staff in general, maintenance, you name it. Very, very good. Commissioner Cummings?
I'm good. Thank you so much for coming in.
Commissioner Terriani?
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving a plan of finance, finance by the Geisinger Authority. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, I forgot to bring this up when we're voting on the endorsement of making sure that our first responders' coverage is covered. That's a picture of one of our first responders before he got sick, and then what, he was actually at the hearings. That picture on the bottom is actually of him at the hearings about three days before he died. See, you could see, they couldn't even understand exactly what was in that air, that they were, you know, they were eating it, you know, it was on their food, it was in their water. You know, I mean, you know they'd take the air mask off or whatever mask they had on, but that's the debilitation that it caused to that individual. Like, a young, healthy man to, just on the edge of death. So, so always make sure you thank our first responders, they really mattered to all of us. Okay. Nineteen dash zero one six eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely for the Blakely-Mott Haven Street Improvement Project. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grand Construction Contract for the Borough of Blakely-Mott Haven Street Improvement Project. Number one, General Construction, Penn C Supply Incorporated, 300 Armstrong Road, Pittston, PA, 18640, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder, for $137,931.70. Here to speak on this resolution is the Contract Manager, Peggy Picati.
Good morning. This is just standard procedure with the CDBG program. We're just entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough and with the construction company to do a project in Blakely in the Mott Haven section. It's a street improvement project. We'll be paving the streets.
The Board, have any questions?
Do we own these, like, the county?
It's in the Borough of Blakely. The streets are located in the Borough.
So we're paying for their streets to be paved? Is that how that works? I thought...
The CDBG...
It's CDBG money.
Yeah. They applied for it, and they qualified.
I didn't know we paved roads, that's all I'm saying. I thought we just did the fronts of, the facades of the buildings on that.
No, it's a street, we do street paving.
Interesting. Have to look into that.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one six nine.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Coming in.
This is a resolution in approving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas, the Board of Commissioners is interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods, since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt... municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to Ronald McDonald House. Project description: Roof kitchen security system and retaining wall repair renovations. Total cost: $200,000. Amount from the CRP program: $10,000. Number two, Archibald Borough Veterans Monument Park. Project description: Phase one park development, LSA grant pending. Total cost project: $70,000. Amount from the CRP program: $10,000. Haricek McAndrew American Legion Post, 869. Project description: Expand kitchen area for the improved community services. Total project cost: $30,000. Amount from the CRP program: $10,000. Number four, Greater Carbondale YMCA. Project description: YMCA Community Park Development Connection for the River Heritage Trail. Total project cost: $226,225. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number four, Oliphant Borough. Project description: Purchase of surveillance camera systems for borough building, police stations, borough garage, and two public parks. Total project cost is $12,000. Amount from CRP program is $5,000. Green Ridge Little League. Project description: Batting cages, concession stand, other field improvements, renovations. Total project cost: $52,482. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Clifton Township. Project description: Development of walking trail at Clifton Acres Park. Total project cost is $140,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Madison Township. Project description: New handicap ramp at Township Building. Project cost is $12,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number nine, Ambrose Revels American Legion Post, number three, 28. Project description: Remove and replace ceiling. Total project cost: $38,675. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 10, Lackawanna County Chiefs of Police Association. Project description: Purchase SWAT digital radio upgraded equipment. Total project cost: $26,573. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 11, Archibald Borough. Project description: Purchase playground equipment for Maslar and Trooper Welsh Parks. Total project cost: $11,200. Amount from the CRP program: $6,100. Applicant number 12 is the Archibald Athletic and Sportsman's Club. Project description: Renovations of existing restrooms, kitchen, and pavilion. Total project cost: $118,200. Amount from the CRP program is $4,200. Number 13, Unity Community Outreach Food Pantry. Project description: Completion of restrooms inside food pantry warehouse. Total project cost: $68,971. Amount from the CRP program: $10,000. Number 14, Friendship House. Project description: Purchase and replace three rooftop air conditioning units. Total project cost is $49,995. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 15, Black Diamond Hose Company, number two. Project description: Is the purchase of an emergency generator to provide safe shelter for emergencies. Total project cost: $9,800. Amount from the CRP program is $9,800. Number 16, Jessup Hose Company, number one. Project description: Building and grounds beautification project, including sidewalks and curb replacement and interior ceiling tile replacement. Total project cost is $19,350. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 17, Abington Area Joint Recreation Board. Project description: Install lighting at the girls' softball field at Hillside Park in South Abington Township. Total project cost is $50,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 18, Applicant John J. Michaels VFW Post, 5207. Project description: Improvements to building, including new carpeting and new floor, new lighting. Project total cost is $35,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 19, Applicant North Scranton Vikings. Project description: Purchase and install new scoreboard, replace roof. Total project cost: $25,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 20, The Greenhouse Project. Project description: Renovations to the community greenhouse at Naug Park to install an ADA compliant door to allow handicap visitors and participants to access the outdoor garden. Total project cost: $25,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 21, West Scranton Community Development. Project description: Roof replacement at the community center. Total project cost: $25,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 22, Queen City Hose Company. Project description: Upgrade of self-contained breathing apparatus, face pieces with Scott Site In Mask Thermal Imagers. Total project cost: $10,194. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Number 23, Oliphant Borough. Project description: Purchase and install a granite base for the Freedom Fighters statue. Total cost is $18,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 24, Oliphant Borough. Project description: Excavate backfill and landscape area around the Freedom Fighters statue. Total project cost: $18,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 25, Eureka Hose Company. Project description: Expansion and renovation of the kitchen facilities, including plumbing, electrical, and carpentry. Total project cost: $17,250. CRP program amount is $10,000. And number 26, The Theodore Went VFW Post, 25. Project description: Outdoor renovation, including a new flagpole and upgrades to the pavilion. Total project cost: $20,000. Amount from the CRP program is $10,000. Here to speak on this resolution is Regional Planning Manager, Mary Liz Donato.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is our 18th round of Community Reinvest recipients. Eighteenth since 2013, we, the program was initiated. We are, you know, we just, Fran just read 26 recipients for a total of $220,100, and we're going to be leveraging $1.5 million in the recreation and the community facilities projects.
Amazing. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, this is a project that, I, I don't know, who exactly started this? Was it Cory or?
It started, yeah, Cory.
Oh, yeah.
Myself.
Cory, Brian, Jim Wanzek, and Commissioner O'Malley.
Okay, through the economic development.
The whole idea was at the time was, everybody was noticing that there was a lot of projects out there that we're just a little bit away from the finish line, and it's really tough to raise money, and sometimes people be having spaghetti dinners and bake sales and all the stuff, and it's really tough to come up with money. And it was supposed to work in three different phases. One, to help enrich the community and make for quality of life, and there two was to get people working because, you know, I mean, it's contractors involved in this and people doing the work to finish up these projects. Some of them are actually just done in-house, literally, by the people that apply for it, so it's really good.
No, I think it's a good program. I'm just saying that this is one of the largest programs that's funded wholly by you, the taxpayers of Lackawanna County. This is your money, this is where it's going, through economic development, and, you know, it, it's helping everyone throughout the county. So if there's areas that you feel, what, firehouse or a hose company?
Legion, baseball, a little bit everything, seniors.
If there's something that your community's working on, a park that you need additional funding for, always give us a call at the Commissioner's office and see if there's any of this community reinvestment money available for you. It's budgeted for every year. It fluctuates, you know, depending on our budget. But this is, you know, this is something that's, I mean, is very transparent. We have this right up, a whole list for you to see who and where the money's going for, and it is your money, so it's a good program. And I'm hoping that the Scranton Times prints the whole entire list, that would be great, so that people could see, you know, how the funds are allocated and what they could be eligible for in different areas, because I think it's one of the programs that really does help out, you know, some of the volunteer fire companies and volunteers throughout our community where they don't have to be using LSA money, which makes me very happy. So, you know, I like this program, I think that it does a lot of good, and I hope it continues indefinitely. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terry? I'd like to congratulate all the recipients, and good luck in getting to the finish line of your project. And Liz, thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
This really is, it's, it's really something you get to see exactly, you know, something being done immediately.
Right.
And, and they're just so happy to get it, like, I can name so many different things. Jesus, the one fire company up in Madison, they needed a roof, and I think they got a grant for like $10,000, they got a metal roof on there, that'll be there forever. You know, I mean, like, just little things, handicap accessible walkways for wheelchairs, so many of those went out through the years, just so many different things along the way.
Yeah, you know, that brings to mention, up in Carbondale and Childs, John, what was the hose company?
America.
They didn't have a, they didn't have a stair, they came to me and they said, "We don't have any stairs." I went up and looked at it, I mean, there's a door on the second floor, but nothing, no, no deck or porch, because they couldn't afford to get it done, so I brought it in, and, and I like to, you know, thank the Commissioners for supporting me on that venture, because that was really something that was necessary at the time, so thank you. I just, things like that, you know, they just don't have the funds to finish, finish what was necessary, so thank you.
So many things. I'd like to make a motion approving the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero one seven zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing an amended RACP grant application, authorizing the filing of a Development Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Stone Run Trucking LLC. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby amend Resolution 18 dash 0011 unanimously passed on January 10th, 2018, whereas Dixon City Revitalization Project entails acquisition of a parcel of land located at the rear 347 Main Street Dixon City, and the construction of a new 3,000-square-foot warehouse facility located in Dixon City, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program, RACP funds, as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Stone Run Trucking LLC has proposed that the county assists Stone Run Trucking LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas, the county desires to assist Stone Run Trucking LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program for the project. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. And now therefore, be it resolved that the County, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an award in the amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Stone Run Trucking LLC for the project. Here to speak on this resolution is our, is our Grant Manager, Sandy Upshinsky.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is merely an amended resolution. When this resolution was originally passed, the group that was referenced in it, Dixon City Revitalization Group LLC, have, in the meantime, changed their name as a business move to Stone Run Trucking. So, the Office of the Budget of the Commonwealth has asked us to amend this to reflect the correct business name.
Does the Board have any questions?
This is nineteen dash one six nine?
No, nineteen dash one zero one seven zero.
That's right, okay, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. Got it, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion authorizing amending the R cap grant application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Annie?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Annie.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero one seven one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This resolution is entering into an agreement with Edge Insights. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Edge Insights' expense reduction strategies for waste cost management. Term of agreement is 48 months from the date of agreement. Commissioners, this is the resolution that Tom Durkin had spoke of, that we would like to see, to use this company to see if we can save the county money in any way.
Yes, they offer you, yeah.
Yes, sir.
They only make money if they save us money.
Yeah, I reviewed the agreement, Commissioners, and basically, that's correct, that we don't pay unless they save us money.
Yes, yeah.
They're gonna go and review our contracts with waste haulers that are providing services to the county, at our parks, in our buildings, and if they can reduce that amount, then they would get a percentage of the savings.
That's true.
And if they don't find any savings, they get nothing.
Does the Board have, does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering an agreement with Edge Insights. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Annie?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one seven two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a MATP grant agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Public Welfare for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, MATP, in the amount of $1,127,300. The agreement shall commence on July 1st, 2019, and terminate on June 30th, 2020. And here to speak on the resolution is the Manager of Coordinated Transportation, Wayne Williams.
Good morning, Wayne.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you?
Good.
This is just the annual agreement between DHS and the County of Lackawanna to provide MAT transportation.
For those in the viewing audience, that would be our blue buses.
Correct.
All right. They do a great job.
Thank you very much.
It's a great service, make sure that our, our seniors and those that are disabled have an opportunity to get around on the buses and get to where they go, it really matters.
Thank you.
We actually have a retired driver in the audience, he'll be getting up to speak a little bit later, so, okay. But, does the Board have any questions?
Well, this is the transport fans that we were saying we weren't gonna get the funding, we got the funding?
Yes, yeah, we, well, we got 180-day study done. DHS is gonna do 180-day study, which gives us a little bit more time to do some, some homework and get some more on our side. And the actual RFQs that went out will expire, so they're gonna have to actually put out for another RFQ, so get by us a little bit more time.
But this is that funding and they're, we're getting it, we're receiving it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into the MATP grant agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero one seven three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a professional services agreement with, for the coroner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into the professional service agreements on behalf of the County Coroner's Office with Biohas Solutions, Northern Tier Research, Forensic Associates of Northeast PA, and Pathology Associates of NEPA. Here to speak on the resolution today regarding these are Coroner Tim Rowland.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. They are, two resolutions are for our forensic pathology autopsy services, one is for our forensic toxicology services, and one is for our medical waste refuse.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Rowland?
You're happy with the services, right? You're happy with all these services?
Yes, and, and they're in line with the, what the other industry people are providing.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, any other, they're local, though. Good, keeping in Lackawanna County, very good. Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion entering a professional service agreement for the coroner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Annie?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero one seven five.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution for the conveyance of the White Bridge property. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby convey the White Bridge Playground to the City of Carbondale for $1. And here to speak on this resolution is our very own General Counsel, Don Frederickson.
Sorry. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, as you know, um...
Fred, would you like to come up to the, to Mike?
This, this property has a long saga attached to it. Uh, in nineteen forty, the county took this property into its inventory for non-payment of taxes, and it's been in our inventory since then, except for two glitches along the way. Uh, from nineteen forty to nineteen sixty, it sat vacant, in nineteen sixty-one, the county entered into a lease agreement with the White Bridge Playground Association to lease the property from the county for the purposes of establishing a playground, which they did. There's playground equipment on there, there's swings and rides and so forth for the children, and it was maintained by the Playground Association and by the city since that time, and maintained as a playground. Uh, in nineteen eighty-eight, the property was sold uh through uh, out of our inventory, uh, but the sale was rescinded once it was determined that there's a playground there. And it sat again in our depository list, on our inventory list, uh, until two thousand eleven, when it was again sold by the county. Uh, it was challenged in court by a resident, and Mr. Polczeski challenged that lawsuit in court. Judge Nealon determined that indeed it was a gift that was given by the county to the City of Carbondale, because they've been maintaining it as, as, as a playground since nineteen sixties. Uh, well, with the rescinding of that sale, it comes back into our inventory, and our tax assessor's office called us and said, look, um, we keep selling this property, can we get it out of our inventory and give it to the city? And that made sense, so I got in touch with Michelle Bannon, who was the administrator for the City of Carbondale. They agreed to accept the property, they've been maintaining it and insuring it anyway since nineteen sixty. Um, and so at this point, we're asking the Commissioners to approve the sale of this property for a dollar from the county to the city, so it'll be taken out of our inventory list and will not be sold again in the future.
It's quite a story, isn't it, Commissioner?
It's funny, because I, I remember the news station, I remember them talking about it, and I think actually they were having a little issue with the guy, didn't want to give it back at first, it was a, it was a different type of situation, but uh, this is great now, it's gonna be sold, it'll be yours, it's gonna be the Carbondale's playground, so.
We'd like to first of all thank the county for, for being patient through the whole process with it, and also for being so diligent in finding the history, entitling it back to us, because none of the people named on any of the lines of title are alive or even around, so we're grateful to have it back in our name.
Commissioner Cummings?
I, I didn't know about it, so I guess, whatever. I didn't, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so. Didn't notice, we didn't talk about it.
Commissioner Terriani?
No, it's just hard to believe government can work so confusingly wrong.
Well, now it's efficient.
I don't know about that, I haven't had a chance to look at it, I don't, John, what, I don't even understand what's going on here.
Yeah. This was talked about at our work session too, wasn't it?
Yeah, we did, yeah, it was the work session.
I don't have it on my work session notes.
Okay, I discussed that at the work session, yeah.
In early July?
Yeah, it wasn't the last one, it was, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we had to move it because Michelle wasn't available for the last meeting, so we put it on for this.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I'd like to thank listener Don Frederickson for being diligent on this, and uh, Michelle for doing a great job, she did a great job of Carbondale, she's a shining star in the government of Carbondale, you really are, Michelle Bannon.
Thank you.
Matters so much, and if she was ever leaving, we'd love to steal her up for the county, she's the best. But um, this really matters, it's a playground, and we won't have to ever have any more stories about it, it'll be a playground and it'll be it for Carbondale, so, it's a great day. I'd like to make a motion for the conveyance of the White Bridge property, do I have a second?
A second, I have no idea what a second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioners, and thank you for all the staff's help as well.
No, no problem, thanks, Michelle. Nineteen dash zero one seven nine.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Assessment Board. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Assessment Board. William Jones the second, Abington, South Abington Township, one-year term to begin immediately and expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of the Assessment Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one eight zero.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Al Chelick from Mayfield, PA, term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Lackawanna County Land Bank, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero one eight one.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee. Patrick Williams from Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Before we vote this, I would like to have uh Bobby Walsh, one of my favorite employees, come up, Gary, would you like to set Bobby up with the mic there? Uh, Bobby is on the County Disability Actions Committee since we uh put all new appointments on there, because it was actually not being utilized for years, and this board is very active, they meet monthly, and they were involved in um making sure that our new building has eleven level playing field for everyone. And um, we've actually, I think this is our second appointment in the last so many months, so people want to be involved, and it really matters, and for those of us that are older, remember, there wasn't even curb cuts back in the seventies, and now we have curb cuts, we have buses, we have accessible bathrooms, we have ramps, we have opportunities, because everybody deserves to be on the same level playing field. And I would like to uh thank my friend Bobby Walsh, that comes to work with a smile every day, for being here. Bobby, the floor is yours.
I am on the Disability Action Committee. The committee's mission is to educate the public, both individuals and businesses to the laws and needs of the community, and assist people to meet their needs in order to live productive life. The committee has been very active over three years.
Yes, they have been.
We had a disability resources fair, and ate a training program on June twenty-seventh. I met Patrick Williams at the training, and I know he will be a fantastic member on our committee. Congratulations, Patrick.
Great job, Bobby. Patrick, would you like to step up to the podium? Um, Patrick Williams is a great man, he um Borough Council, Clark Summit, um, actually, he retired from uh coordinate transport, uh veteran, and um just a person who just gives back to community in all different ways besides being an elected official, and um, he requested to be in part of the board, and we're very happy to have him, Patrick?
Yes, well, thank you, Commissioners, for the appointment, I, I really do appreciate it, and uh, I, I know I'm gonna do my best with Bobby and the rest of the folks, I met some of them at the ADA meeting recently, the presentation, I should say, at Hilton, which was uh very well done, and uh, but uh, I, I know Keith Williamson, many years ago, when you just mentioned Commissioner O'Malley.
Keith, Keith is a great man.
Of curb cuts, we got involved with curb cuts in Clark Summit, that was a great, thanks to county money, and um, boy, there's curb cuts all over, and they make it so easy.
Everywhere, they were never there before.
Right. So all, all those small things make a big difference, and listening to everyone here today with some of the presentation, what, what a great place Lackawanna County, I'm thrilled to live, I really, you know, I, I mean that, and serving Clark Summit Borough for close to nineteen years now as a councilman is a.
Wow.
Is a, is a, a job.
Fun times and tough times.
But anyway, um, I, I thank you guys for the appointment, I really do, and I, I hope that I'll do well, I'm sure I will.
I'm sure you will, too.
We know you will, Commissioner Cummings?
Oh, I know you'll do a great job, thank you so much for volunteering, anyone that volunteers for these board positions, positions, um, you know, is a hero in my eyes, because we need to fill them, and you know, there's many, many openings, so to the general public, if you're interested in serving on a board, please uh get in touch with our office, because there's many, many, many vacant opens, openings right now, so, uh, thank you for providing your service and volunteering, I appreciate it.
Nice of you to say that, thank you.
Commissioner Terriani?
You've done a great job in anything you've done up there, Pat, and uh, I'm sure you'll be a huge asset to the uh, the board.
Very good, I appreciate that.
Glad to have you.
Bobby, was there anything else you'd like to say? No? Okay. I'd like to make a motion uh for Lackawanna County Disabilities Action Committee, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Patrick, congratulations, I know you do a great job, thank you. Nineteen dash zero one eight two.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Scranton Area Foundation. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Scranton Area Foundation. Donna Barbeti from Scranton, term effective immediately and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of the Scranton Area Foundation, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, nineteen dash zero one eight three.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority. Dr. Gary M. Smedley from Carbondale, term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'd like to make a motion to Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, nineteen dash zero one eight four.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority. James Bernie Junior from Clay Avenue in Dunmore, term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, at this time, opportunity for the public to address the board. Okay. Commissioners, other business.
Just wanna talk.
You got caught off guard, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't understand.
Joan must have left.
Joan must have left, and I thought she was gonna make a motion. Um, I actually uh wanted to talk a little bit about um nine eleven, um, and, you know, thank uh, thank Commissioner for bringing that up. It was a, it was a pleasure to uh give homage to someone that we lost, and, and such a, in such a horrible way. Um, and also the fact that, you know, it's, it pains me to see some of the commentary made by some people in Congress in regards to nine eleven, um, where they feel it's our fault that it happened and things like that, I think that's crazy, I think that, um, you know, people, there should be some kind of reprimand for people that do things like that, I'm hoping that there is, but anyway. Um, on to the opioids, which is my next uh huge issue that I've been working on and created a task force here, and look how far we've come, Commissioner, where, um, you know, I was called a conspiracy theorist in twenty fourteen to, you know, twenty nineteen, where we're actually, you know, doing all these different things to help, and now uh it looks like the numbers of people that have died from opioid deaths has started to decrease or level off, so.
Thank God.
You know, that, that was uh, you know, something that was interesting to see. Um, you know, and these bags, this innovation that's coming up from all the different people that are trying to help um to rid us from this, because I know for a fact, I have family members that have gotten fentanyl patches from the elderly, that was how they started. You know, I mean, it, it's just been a horrible event for many, many people across our county, our state, and our country, and um, you know, uh, had we seen this early enough, I mean, this, this was a, these medications were not approved by the FDA. Uh, this, there was no testing done on these pills, the testing that was done, uh, you know, these pharmaceutical companies lied and said that it was, you know, not as addictive, because it was long-acting and blah, blah, whatever else they did. And then they really did throw, throw it on the public and say that, you know, they did this big marketing campaign, um, basically trying to trick the American people into getting their government to support this at the FDA. And they succeeded, and they got the, they went after the veterans first, saying that, you know, we weren't treating our veterans uh for pain well enough, and that, you know, this, you know, they know how to tug on the heartstrings of the American people who are so, have such great hearts and want to help people, you know, we don't want to hurt anyone. But it just goes to show how mu, how vigilant we must be in looking at marketing trends and, and media. Um, you know, we were tricked by, you know, alcohol, look, the devastation alcohol's done to our communities, we were tricked by the cigarette manufacturing companies. You know, they, they actually did uh commercials at the time, um, back in the thirties and forties, where doctors came out and said it was good for you, and they had doctors in, in white lab coats saying, you know, it's good for your throat when you smoke, it eases your, your, oh, yes. Um, and it was, you know, it was good for you, and uh, you know, people bought into that, and then, you know, how they got women to smoke was uh, they went and, you know, had women out in New York City stand in front of this building that was, I'm not gonna talk about the shape of the building, but it was some kind of psychological thing that they actually had psychologists come and say, you know, how can we, you know, appeal to women and, and get them to think it's okay, and um, they had a whole bunch of women standing out in New York City and um said something like, you know, the men can't stop us from doing what we want, you know? Um, making it a sexist kind of uh frame of mind, and within, I think it was two days, the cigarette sales for women went up uh by fifty percent, uh based on a commercial that was on television, so, um, you know, and, and none of this, none of this was adequate testing. It, it was addictive, uh, but alcohol is addictive, uh, nicotine is addictive, and uh opioids were addictive, and the American people uh were, you know, always lied to and put on this through marketing plays. And it just goes to show that, you know, uh, and I'm, I'm going to stick to my guns on this, there has not been any testing, uh, enough testing on medical marijuana or marijuana to prove any of the claims that they're saying today, so. And that's been reported in the Scranton Times and the AP, so that's not anything that I'm saying that's inaccurate, so just be careful of, and that's why I worry, you know, I worry about, you know, where is, you know, what's the next product they're gonna bring to our, to our uh people to get them addicted to, uh, that wasn't tested, and it's, it's, it's just devastating to see over and over again that we've been fooled by these marketing techniques, and I would just hope that people would pay more attention, and, you know, before they just uh took the word of anyone on any of these products that are coming out. And uh, last but not least, I would like to recognize a good friend um that passed away. Um, you know, I bring these small business people in, and one of the first people I wanted to bring into our small business was Phyllis Michello, who owns Anthony's Restaurant in Old Forge. Um, I started going to, I, I, you guys have probably been to Anthony's, right?
A ton of times.
Well, it, it used to be owned by a gentleman named Anthony, obviously, and uh Phyllis used to be a waitress there. And she worked her way up, um, she was a waitress, and then she went into uh the line cook, and then she went into uh uh being the, the head chef, I guess, and now she owns it, you know, I mean, that, she's an inspiration, and, and, um, you know, she's just such a good woman, and she, her family are such great people, um, she's had a lot of losses over the years. And she was always someone that I admired and looked up to, um, because of how, what a good heart she has, and how she takes care of her family, and I'd just like to send out a public condolence to the loss of her brother, um, or, I'm sorry, of her uh, her brother-in-law, Thomas Michello, um, who was a friend of mine, and he did work with her in her restaurant at one time, and good man, and um, you know, just want to make sure I get that out there, that uh, I am really sorry for their loss, and um, what good people, it just, just breaks my heart. Anyway, thank you, um, I thank you for the time, and um, have a great day, and have a nice summer, I hope everybody has a good vacation and have a safe vacations.
Commissioner Terriani?
I'm good.
Uh, I'd just like to bring up, you know, geez, this past week, um, fiftieth anniversary of First Man Stepping on the Moon, like, think about that, Neil Armstrong, you know, what a, what an incredible, inspiring day that was, you know, it's funny, I was born March third, nineteen sixty-nine, and my brother Paul, he had, rest his soul, passed away about ten years ago.
Thank you, sir.
Um, turned around and he told me when I was seven years old, he goes, you saw the first man step on the moon? I said, what do you, how is that possible? He's, I said, I was like six months old, he goes, I made sure that I held, seven months old, he goes, I've held you up and made sure that you were facing the TV when the rocket went off, and then three days later, when Neil Armstrong stepped on the moon, so you could say that you saw that. And that really is an inspiration, it just goes to show what the United States can do whenever they, whenever they work together, our country is a great country, and that was a great win in nineteen sixty-nine. You know, we beat Russia to the moon, and we're the first, I mean, we were the first to be there, and we're gonna go much further with space exploration, but it was just amazing, and it was, it was really cool to watch all the old videotapes of everything that went on, and actually, like, actually being in that, showing the control room when everything was going on, from their pulse, their heart rate, everything, their blood pressure, and everything that went on between here and the moon. And what I was amazed was that actually the president at the time had, they were concerned that they weren't even gonna be able to get off the moon after it was over, they didn't think they were gonna be able to, be able to take off after it was over, and he had two different speeches, and one was the speech, what he would say if they weren't able to leave the moon, and the one if they came back, and what, thank God, they made it back to earth, and, you know, what it means to our country. But um, also, um, two weeks ago, we had a prop, opportunity, myself, Commissioner Cummings absolutely makes it every year, um, Sammy Heenan's rally at the courthouse, um, she's an angel, you know, she lost her life to addiction, and um, her family, um, Marty and Stacy, have this rally every year, all vendors there, all um different vendors there for anybody that has an issue to be able to get the help that they need. And it always amazed me, because I remember she, she died in April of uh two thousand and sixteen, and they were in to see us, by, I'm telling you, I think it was May or June, to talk about doing something at the courthouse, and it turned out to be in this rally, and um, keep her in our thoughts and prayers, and she actually, the first rally they. the first rally they ever had, there was an individual there that was high on heroin, and he went up to a doctor, and he was actually put into a rehab that day. That was just, that one person, just that day, four years ago. But I would like to thank the Heaneyhand family and all the vendors that were there, all the different healthcare providers, I'd like to also thank Ms. Durkin for the great job, Ms. Durkin for the great job that she does for us for addiction, it was a, it was a great day at the courthouse. On a lighter note, July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, great time to come downtown Scranton, I think I might have Ricky come on up and say a few words about, this is a great weekend, this wins, this, this weekend, three days, Wyoming Avenue, Friday, five to eight, Saturday, nine AM on, three-on-three basketball, what's going on, Ricky?
Sure, it's sports, Commissioner, that's why I'm here, right?
Yes, listen, anytime I see you, my son will be in, I'm sure.
Well, that's good. County, the annual county three-on-three basketball tournament is this weekend, we start Friday, games will start at five o'clock, it'll run all night, well, not all night, till eight, eight-thirty, games will end, and then we start up again Saturday morning, nine AM, and run most of the day. We have seventy-five teams signed up this year, three hundred and twenty-five players, so the one hundred and half of the two hundred block of Wyoming Avenue will be busy with basketball, starting Friday afternoon, we start set up early Friday morning, our maintenance staffs from Parks and Rec and from here in the building do a great job getting everything set up and ready for us, and I'll tell you what, Friday night, you come down about six o'clock, when all the courts are playing and the sidewalks are jammed with people, it's really a, a sight to see, you know, that we're able to pull it off, and that, you know, there's some action going on.
Yeah, a lot of action.
On the streets at Wyoming Avenue, it's pretty neat, if you're a sports fan, or if you're just downtown walking around, come over and take a look, and you'll see how busy it is, and it's kind of cool to see everybody on the court playing.
It is, and great, and great job, I know you put your heart and soul in this, so thank you for everything you do.
We're busy this week, yeah.
It's a busy week. So everyone, please come on down and cheer on the players, and there's some, so some great matchups there, and.
Great play.
It's ages, what, like, it's like, really young.
Girls and boys start with grades age, grades four and five, and the boys, we run up to, and actually, a men's open and a men's recreational division, girls, we have up to high school, so, every grade is representative from fourth grade on, boys and girls' side, and we have seen an increase in girls playing over the course of the six or seven years that we've been involved in organizing, and it's pretty neat to see all the girls come out and play, the boys as well, but the girls are starting to catch up and.
Is your niece playing?
She's actually going on vacation Fridays, which is not playing this year, some of her friends are playing.
I know, she played, she played last year?
She played last year, yeah.
Great, great job, Ricky.
Thank you.